Mary. Mary, you're a little distant.
Oh. So, Brian, are you going to be leading this meeting now that you're the chair?
I believe I am, yes.
Okay.
All right. Well, I think we're ready to go. So I see Scott and Beth are here. All right, so I believe we do roll call now?
Okay, so we're going to call this meeting to order at 3:04 PM. And roll call of Brian Lubin.
Yep.
Scott Farman.
Here.
That's Bruzoni.
Here.
Excellent. Okay, we're all set.
All right, so I think we need to approve the agenda now. We just have the three items. So do we have, do we need a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move such.
I'll second.
All right. Do we just do another roll call?
Roll call vote to approve the agenda, Brian?
Can we do that with unanimous consent or is that not a thing?
We'll be done roll call.
Okay, then yes.
Okay, Scott?
Yes.
Beth? Yes.
Excellent.
Okay, statement of conflict of interest. I have none?
None.
None.
All right, but we have no correspondence. And then the approval of the minutes of the special land use meeting we had last in August to discuss the sort of process of getting this committee going. That is in the consent calendar here. So do we need another motion to prove the consent calendar?
My move such.
My second.
Call again, Brian?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Beth? Yes.
All right, well, here we go. So I guess now we have time for a public comment. If there's anybody here who would like to be recognized, let us know.
I think there's only five of us in this. Is that correct?
I figured, but I don't know if there's some other way to.
Is this when we would also comment on items not on the agenda? Or is that?
I think this is public.
That's okay. Fine, I make sure.
All right, so seeing no public comment, so let's remove to the regular calendar items. All right, so the first item is the discussion of the event review process. How we are informed and how we choose items to discuss and so and all those matters. So we are now on, Mary, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we are on a couple email lists for events to coming from permit Sonoma.
As far as I know, we are on all relevant list. But what I am not sure of is the criteria for when they decide to send them to us. Ministerial in nature, we are not going to get any kind of a notice because no notice is required. And I think that's the loophole where we are not seeing.
Right.
Things we want to see.
As I understand, those ministerial ones do not come through permit Sonoma? Okay. So in terms of.
I think engineering handles it. Is that correct? In permit Sonoma?
Actually, it does go through permit Sonoma. It's just that the notice requirements are not the same. The ministerial ones don't have the same notice requirements.
Is permit Sonoma reluctant as well to notify us?
Yeah, good question.
Not so far as I'm aware. We have been trying to clarify when we're going to be getting them and when it's not necessary. And ministerial permits are part of the ones that we are not going to ever see.
So how do we rectify that? Because the ministerial permits are frequently the ones, you know, they're going to be some of the cycling events, some of the events are the ministerial permits, right, as it stands now? Right. So how do we, how do we do this without?
The way that you would receive notices by going to PRMD or permit Sonoma yourself, going the section where the event section, and they show a calendar of events. And right now, there are no events because it's currently there are none, but.
Okay, so then we need to go look ourselves? Is that, I just want to make sure I heard correctly.
Yeah, I think that's the best route. And I've been going and looking since I became aware that we weren't getting notice and there just aren't any. So I'm keeping an eye on it. Imagine that you guys as land use would also want to do that.
So that notice.
The, sorry, Mary, can you put the link in the chat? Just if you have that link.
Okay.
Thanks. I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Scott.
No, this is casual. So it sounds like that link is really to notify us when an event has been approved and is on the calendar. So there's really no opportunity to to give feedback before it's approved in any way in an event process, correct?
Again, that's, that's been my understanding.
Yeah.
So some of those measures, some of those events have to go through the coastal commission for development permits.
They should, yes.
And then some of them, if they're going on Highway One, would probably need some approval from Caltrans.
I think that's part of the ministerial checkoff, Highway Patrol, Caltrans. They just check off those boxes and then when they're checked off, they get their permit.
We just had a meeting with Leo on this and Leo has the same question. So we gave him a list of questions of things to pursue and one of them was, what about the fact that the coastal commission needs to be involved in the ones that are on the coast? And what about, what is our opportunity to get there and how can we start getting notifications? So we asked him all the same questions and he's going to be going back to permit Sonoma and pursuing this. So we're, we're a little bit frustrated that it's not all together, but we do have Leo pursuing it for us.
Thank you, Elise.
I have a question on that real quick, Elise. Does the Board of Supervisors have the capacity to mandate that we be notified?
The issue doesn't at this point rise to that level. But Leo is working to make sure that it happens. The issue is that they're, they're just not used to doing it. We've asked a couple of times and we're now, you know, trying to beat them over the head with a stick, saying, please give us notification. So we will, we will work it out. We are getting more notification than we used to and we're, we're working to make it 100%, but we'll, we'll get there.
Thank you.
Did you want to throw in the bike permits question now or wait till later in the agenda?
Well, I guess my question would sort of be on some of that stuff is with respect to Highway One and stuff that is clearly in the coastal zone. Do we, I mean, should we be reaching out to the coastal commission? I mean, in theory, they should be getting post development permits. But is that just not happening or do we not know?
In, in the last meeting with, was it Gary?
Okay.
He said that the, it was Eric, Eric Cunningham, he said that the bike rides are not rising to the level where a permit would be required, most of them. And so unless there is a water station or in some, I'm not sure what all of the criteria are for requiring a permit, but they're just not rising to the level where a permit is required. And I think that brought that up before, that you can skirt around it in some way.
So, so when they do the bigger bike rides, so the ones that usually come down Highway One, where they do the, you know, the massive ones where they close the road for part of the time, those are going to be, at least get a coastal permit because they set up in the parking lots on the highway. But the smaller ones, which is like the one we had last month, because they're not in water stations, those are not going to be things that we're going to catch as easily, correct?
What I heard in the last meeting I attended with her.
Okay.
The bikes have the right to use the highway like anybody. And it's when they use the ancillary spaces that that requires a permit. That's my understanding. They could have a thousand bikes and if they're just riding through their traffic.
Yes, but this last ride had break-in water stations. Yeah. So, and their numbers were such that my understanding is that. Go ahead.
Do you know, do you know if they were in the coastal zone or was it in Valley Ford? Because I think.
No, it was in the coastal zone. It was in the coastal zone, Valley Ford, definitely, definitely. So and not only were they in the coastal zone of Valley Ford, which is our purview, but they were also, they're coming from Dillon Beach. So, you know, but that's not our purview. So it's, in having been an avid cyclist a while back, you know, it's, it's more that they have to, that we have to be able to share the road with them without them impeding our car auto or foot traffic. And that's kind of part of, you know, what Eric was talking about a little bit, but some of this is so vague and so easily to get around, it's concerning. And I think that came up with Linda as well with what she experienced inland a bit, the same weekend as the ride out here.
Okay. So we sort of merged the two, two items on the agenda, but I mean, I think both of those are pretty related. So I mean, I think a lot of it is that we will have to be coming and then sort of leading into that third agenda item is, you know, what is the way we can make, if the public has events that they would like us to consider? They know about, because as people have been saying, that we don't get notice of these things until well after they're public. So there will be, you know, they'll be being promoted, but not, but not, won't have applied for the permit because it's ministerial. They don't need to, they don't need to apply for the permit yet. But yet people will know that this race is going to happen. So I mean, I guess the question is, how do we, are we going to, you know, look for the public to help us, help us to some extent to get the, the events, the news of the events that are coming?
That's a good question. That's very good, actually. I hadn't really thought about. I have a, my oldest brother is a, an avid cyclist. And I could ask him which websites he uses. The problem is that many in the cycling community are leery of making things too public too soon because they don't want their events stopped. And we need to somehow make sure they understand, we're not looking to prevent people from legally using a road they have a right to. We're wanting to make sure everyone involved is considered as all. And, and that there's safety for everybody. So I get, that's a good question, Brian. I like that. We need, maybe we just need to start paying attention to some of the cycling websites, some of the groups. You know, getting on the Santa Rosa Bicycle Club's website. Frankly, I should probably get back into cycling. It's going to be a tricycle at this stage of the game, but what the heck? You'll see the old lady in the bike, you know, three wheels driving down Highway One. It's me. That's a good question, though. I like that. That's a good idea. Be proactive.
Scott?
There's the other side of the formula which we can engage in, and that is post-event. If we have people checking up on the events that are notified and just saying how things went or how, how well or how well they didn't go. And, and in our meetings, say, have someone come and say, this was a problem or wasn't? And then put that into the permit Sonoma world as to maybe influence their next application.
And Beth, I know you actually did a little bit of outreach on the previous race. And they, you said they weren't notified in, in Valley Ford of the rates coming through?
No, not at all. So Ron Albini, Bodega Volunteer Fire Department had his first knowledge of it. It was me, Bodega Bay's first knowledge of it was my calling in and asking, you know, do you guys know about this? That was the day before, two days before, for Bodega Bay. Two Rock had no idea. Wilmar had just found out. Goldridge had some idea, but I never got clear as to if it left the secretary's desk or not. I don't know if it got disseminated, or disseminated rather, down to the firefighters or those people making the staff, you know, schedule.
Right, so I guess, you know, with respect to, you know, how much, how many people came through on those? Did they, they weren't blocking traffic in Valley Ford, right? There was traffic was always flowing?
So, so here's the abstract. The good news, there were no incidences. They pretty much came through en masse. Some were between 10 and 11 AM. And they did make their water stop and snack stop on School Street in Valley Ford. They cleaned up after themselves. There wasn't any unusual amount of going to the bathroom noticed, none of our other ranchers. This is just disgusting. I don't mean to be gross, but we just know what to look for every Monday morning to go clean up. And there was nothing unusual. There wasn't, didn't seem to be an unusual amount of toilet paper. So that's a bonus. But my understanding is, other than they were a little annoying, a couple, you know, maybe didn't get out of the way for cars, there was no incident. This was particularly important to Two Rock since the same ride in 2019 apparently blocked all their fire engines in. So Two Rock was not happy, though, about this. They were very distressed. So, you know, but they were pleased that there was no event or no, no big deal this year that occurred. No drama. That's the best word.
I see Elise had her actual hand up.
All right.
I just. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that, that making sure that their notification, particularly of emergency services, is one of the elements in the change to the policy that they have planned. And that noticing us as things come out is also something that we have requested. And, and so we agree with all your comments and I think that this is important to make it happen and that's our job now.
Thank you, Elise. And then Scott?
Is the, it was my understanding is the fire marshal is supposed to pass it down to the fire departments, the fire chiefs. I notice in Timmer Cove, sometimes they get notified the day before when it's been available for many, many days. Is this an internal fire community shortcoming?
Yes. Some of it is, yes.
Okay. So that's something we can improve on.
Yes. The county needs to and North, North Bay Fire and Sonoma County Fire needs to work on, on their own little families with this. As it, further investigating it, some of it was that North Bay Fire had some email addresses incorrect. So that's on a whole nother level. That's concerning, right? But yeah, we somehow need to, to encourage them to play well with others.
With one another, yeah.
Okay. So it's, it sounds like the, if, if there is a more formal notification process so that the organizers have to organize the, have to notify the emergency services, that would be a positive thing. So if that goes through Elise, that would be great. But then, go ahead, Scott.
I think the way I see it, it's not the applicant notifying the local fire department. It's getting the fire marshal, I think, to actually disseminate it in a timely way to the local fire and emergency services. It's an internal fire department. Lack of getting it out, it appears.
In part, yes, but I think, I, I think that we might, so, so here's the thing. The amount of emails that come in are overwhelming. And just like you and I get, you know, God forbid, we go to Macy's website and we have forever get Macy's out of our email. They've got a bunch of that kind of stuff, too. So there has to be a way to mark it so that it shows up quickly. They have to, it has to show up quickly, has to be properly addressed. It has to be marked so they read it. Or do we make it each applicant's responsibility to go to the responding districts and get them to sign off? And maybe throw them 250 bucks on the way for their time, help, you know, fund those districts a little bit. I mean, that's just a thought. I don't know. Dollar amount I just pulled out of thin air.
Well, that would be a, that would be a, if there was a sort of a fee, that would have to be sort of from a California constitutional perspective, that would have to be something that was what it costs the fire department to deal with that. So that is something that Elise and, you know, as they're, after the board is considering these process changes, but some, well, I think that would be helpful. But I guess the other thing is just sort of contact for this committee so that people know they can reach out to us. So that if they hear about something, they can come, if there's some way to contact us, other than we all have our publicly accessible on the CoastMac websites. We each have our, our email addresses on there. I mean, I guess is there, you know, Mary, do you think it might be worthwhile to just add something on that page to say like, for land use and event issues that there can be, you know, the email, either me as the chair or, you know, the three of us who are in the committee? Or you think that's worthwhile or people will read it?
I, I think it's up to you. Would like that to happen on the website. I certainly know how to do it. Elise, is there any problem with doing that? All right. Let me check with, let me check with Elise.
Okay.
And then I'll send language around to the three of you.
Question on that. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Beth. I'll follow.
So, you know, we're coming out of all the COVID restrictions and not, this, this works like for right today. This is wonderful. We're doing this and I'm hoping we'll keep some element of this. What about a meet your max party or meet your max social? You know, we, I did a, participated in something here in Bodega Bay. We have the, we have cert, certified emergency response team. We have search sheds and we need more volunteers. So we had an open house at one of the sheds Saturday morning between nine and 12, hoping to pick up people out for a walk. There were cookies and the fire department stopped by because nothing gets attention like a fire truck. So I mean, I don't know that we want to do it that way, but we, I, I made 10 solid, good contacts that day, people that didn't even know we existed. So, you know, something or meet your Mac, what a Macs do? What is the land, you know, the land planning committee do?
Yeah, this is part of community outreach. Each of us have this role to play in our communities. Maybe Bodega, Valley Ford, Bodega Bay, and perhaps even Generick could, could host one. This is a good time of, to be thinking about that. But that's kind of what we do is, you know, is try to gin up our community to participate and to share ideas and to support and all that. So yes.
So.
And we could do it together, right?
Right. And we also could, you know, Beth, if you want to, if we want to organize something for sort of the southern half of the county, we could definitely do that. Because, well, I mean, obviously we have, we're going to, you know, folks, we have sort of a limited amount of time for folks to apply to actually be on the Mac. Because I know we have in Bodega Bay, we have vacancy and alternate vacancy coming up. But, you know, maybe, you know, sometime early next year, we could talk about, you know, sort of doing something along those lines with, you know, Jay, and we could sort of do something in the southern half and then, you know, maybe we can all just meet in general.
So vacancies, that if they are vacant, if no one applies and they remain vacant, people can apply at any time. So that, you know, we're always looking to fill vacancies. I'm talking about the community giving heads up, kind of looks back to land use permits because neighbors are within a certain feet are notified early, early in the process. And that's where we're really hurting is hearing about things early where we can actually give feedback where it's constructive rather than just show up at a public meeting for or against. So at the moment, we don't seem to be getting notification early. The one we got just shortly ago, thank you, Mary, was applied for in June, June 20, 24. And we heard about it in October after the process was nearly, nearly completed. And I don't disagree with their decision. But I thought the, the intention was to really get in early where we can be constructive as a community to make things better before they get sort of codified. So the public feedback is the way for us to be aware because somebody in the community is notified.
Well, Mary, I think if we, you know, I'm happy to write up a sentence that we can put on the CoastMac webpage. And then Beth and Scott, if you don't mind, we'll just have, you know, tell them to contact the three of us and then we can, you know.
Yeah.
Something else that just jumped out at me about this is that, so I know that anything I do on my property, I, it goes, that I need a permit for goes to one department first at PRMD and that's whoever is going to look at it and decide whether or not it needs a coastal permit. How do we involve, I think there's four people in that department. How do we involve them?
Elise?
I'm just internet not savvy today. Where are we? What do you need?
So my question was, I know that if I'm going to do any, any work that requires a permit on my property, that it's going to go to a group of people and I think there's four of them currently and I may be wrong in PRMD. The first thing they do is they look at it and decide whether or not it needs a coastal permit. So that point of contact for us might be worthwhile engaging, but is that something Leo then is going to talk to?
The PRMD is empowered by the coastal commission to do a lot of the, a lot of the permit work. So it doesn't go back to anybody at the coastal commission unless there's some sort of a dispute or a problem that people are bringing up. So, yeah.
But there's one person, my understanding is each per, each permit comes through and it has to be signed off by a person in this little group to determine whether or not it ever goes to the coastal commission or just put it through the pipeline. Now, I will tell you that that is three-year-old information from when I started investigating what I needed to do to build on my property. So I do have a septic permit in. And I haven't heard anything bad yet, but you know. I'm just thinking that maybe that group of people, the people that do the coastal commission work. I used, I'm just thinking that maybe that group of people, the people that do the Coastal Commission work at PRMD decide where it gets moved on to, maybe they're a point of contact for us, maybe not.
I'm sorry, I was out for a minute. Are we still talking about events, or are we on building now? Because they are, as, as Brian, I believe, was saying at the point when I couldn't speak, it does, it does go, they do go through different departments, PRMD, one goes through engineering, and the other one goes through the planning department. It is, it is harder to get. There's like a certain process that the planning department does in terms of notification, and the engineering department's not used to doing it, which is one of the reasons it's more challenging. Anyway, so which are we, which are we talking about?
We, we kind of moved over to land use.
Okay.
We're kind of brainstorming all of it, but we kind of moved over to land use.
It was how, how do we, with the land use applications, how do we become aware of them when we can actually be constructive in the application being formed of, while it's still open? Like with these Timber Cove Spa Country Inn. Beginning and important issues rose to the top, and they're being dealt with. Go ahead.
Well, one of the interesting things about this, I mean, and it comes up to your question of whether or not to have a standing committee is my concern has been we need to have eyes on this, right? People that are looking for it and making sure things come through and it may very well be, you may decide that, okay, we now have Mary, yay, hero Mary. Who will be like a, a hunting dog, tracking these down and watching over them because she takes it very seriously and, and and tracking things down, and then when something rises to the point of somebody needs to look at this, she would contact the land use committee, and then you guys could have, you know, you could be an ad hoc and, and call a meeting at that point. Or you could decide that you want this, this to remain a standing committee, in which case we would make sure that all the notices go to everybody on the committee and, and they're multiple eyes just watching all the time. I just, I'm fearful of things getting missed if we don't have eyes on, but I do trust Mary's eyes. I was also thinking when we were having that discussion about standing versus ad hoc, I'm wondering, is Brian still with us, or is he just extraordinarily still? Oh, yeah, you're, you're really good at standing very still. It's like, is that frozen? Anyway, we do have, you know, the LCP is going to be an ongoing process and you know, Mary and Leo and I were meeting about this this morning, and even when it gets through the where they are, there's going to be a program process, there're going to be more and more processes and and it's not I wasn't thinking that you guys want to review this every single, every couple of months. But again, the concept of having eyes on, here are the ten most important things that we think need to be included, like dealing with the cutting down dead trees and not having to get an onerous permit, or you know, there, there are some key things that are really, really critical that have been brought up by the MAC multiple times and haven't been incorporated. So is there a use in the land use committee to taking a look at where the progress has gone in the last couple of months, and what has or hasn't happened, and what's coming up? And is there an opportunity? And again, the chances are good that there won't be a lot to talk about every other month basis, yet having eyes on it means that we won't miss it when there is an opportunity. So, so my question really to you guys on that, in terms of the permits and as they come up and as they get noticed is do we want to keep the committee going for a while and just see how the, if we improve the flow of information? Do you want to leave it for, you know, Mary to notify when something actually pops up? What, you know, what are the key things that you want to see happen? And I'm totally open, but I, I thought that it was worthy having the meeting instead of canceling it, as, as there was some discussion of, just to just to decide how to move forward, and then once a decision is made, you can report to the, the MAC committee that this is what we've decided to do, and this is how it's going to go for these reasons. So I kind of, I started on something and just kept going with all my thoughts, and, and now it's up to you.
Your hand is up, Beth.
Oh, it is? Oh, well. No, you know, so a couple of things jumped out. In the concept of having, you know, eyes and ears on things, augmenting Mary's very hard work. I personally think we have a value in regularly meeting. We can also discuss other issues we know of, and there's, there's one that I want to get to before we, you know, sign off. Some other issue that we've not discussed yet, and I think it's good to brainstorm that way. Now, LCP, I can use all the help I can get on chewing that document up and seeing what we really need to look at. I'm sure we've all read parts of it. I like the way that the meetings are going to go with the Planning Commission and digesting it, slowing the process down, digesting it so everybody gets the time and opportunity and information to have an opinion and have a voice. Personally, I think, and I know I'm the new kid on the block, I think we can be very proactive and do good work if we meet regularly.
So procedure question, Elise. The reason we became a standing committee is because we went past a calendar year. And by law, you have to, ad hoc can't extend beyond a year, correct?
No, we became a standing committee because if you are a regularly operating unit of the that has a regular job, so an ad hoc is something like, here's an issue that's popped up, we're going to examine the issue and, and then report on it and put it back. If it's something where the committee is doing a job that lasts
Past a year?
That's, no, it's not necessarily, I mean, it's just, it's, it's an operational entity of the, of the MAC, it's you know, it could go six months or it could go two years, but it's as long as this is happening, there, there are new permits popping up, there are new issues popping up. So as long as it's an operational committee that's, that's just addressing everything under a certain topic, then it needs to be a standing committee. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so we need to be a standing committee, it sounds like.
As long as, as long as you're not taking it issue by issue, if you were, if, if you decided to be an ad hoc again, and Mary did the scanning of all the stuff and then said, here's an issue you guys need to look at. And you have a, a meeting on one particular issue, that would be right, that would be an ad hoc, but it, that would be a single issue committee versus ongoing land use. But, you know, really, having a meeting every other month to check in and see what's going on doesn't seem to be horribly onerous in order just to have your eyes on, on all this stuff.
It's harder on you guys to do all the, the Brown Act stuff than it is for us to show up and discuss.
Not too hard.
Okay.
Starting to get the hang of it, you guys.
Yeah, I mean, in terms of this, any committee, I, 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 you know, we haven't had a ton of actual permits to discuss, but I feel like at some point there, if we get the process down, and if we start seeing these things, whether they come through somewhere or through somebody else, it does seem like it's more of a continuous operating thing that, rather than having to reform it, ad hoc committee anytime, every time there's, you know, one thing. This seems more nimble.
Yep.
In terms of just the, the three items that we had, is there anything else we need to discuss on those, and other than sort of wait to see what Leo says about the that, you sort of, the expediting notice? And sort of, and getting that information on the website, is there anything else that we have on those three items?
You brought forward, Beth, you brought forward what you wanted to, yes?
Yeah, there's a, there's another event kind of thing, but it's not bicycle. That I'm not quite sure where to interject it.
What, I mean, the, the number one was sort of meant to be broad, so if you have anything else?
So I, I do, and, and several people in the community have come to me with this. I also was concerned previous to that, I think it may very well have been the same weekend, or week of the bicycle, it's actually, it was the weekend before. It was the last weekend of deer hunting season, and that plays a part in this. Approximately thirty boy scouts brought canoes to the estero. And with their group leaders canoed the, the estero down to the sandbar and proceeded to set up an overnight camp. In this, they brought in enough firewood for to maintain six separate campfires overnight. It, it became a big problem, and I'll spare you all the details, but where I see the issue is if there was a permit process for that. And there was, there was a bunch of trespassing, there was a bunch of other stuff, but if there was a permit process for that, that this could have gone much more smoothly and safely. Many of the parents had no idea that once the sunset for first responders to get to them would have been a Herculean act, people actually left when they found that out. They didn't know they couldn't have campfires, they, then there's, there's thirty people pooping and peeing. That's another problem, right?
Yeah.
When you look at something as sensitive as the estero, it's a public waterway, they should have access to it, there should be, I mean, I can't think of anything cooler than a bunch of boy scouts investigating, you know, the, the habitat of the estero, I think that's really neat. But how do we do this? Where they're safe, where they have a legal place to put in, they trespass on private property, as most people that kayak onto the estero do. But having a couple of people do that versus, I think it was twelve separate canoes, totally different game, right? So just brainstorming this, what can we bring to this that makes this safer and more enjoyable for these guys, you know, or, or ladies and
So maybe you, maybe you know, Elise, the Sonoma Land Trust bought a lot of that land that's by the sandbar at the end of the estero?
So that's actually
Going to become a park? Or have some public access to it?
Yes, they are working on public access at the estero, and it will be guided public access, it's not going to be just open, open access.
Right, I mean, I feel like I have, I mean, I've trespassed onto that public to put in by Valley Ford and to take a kayak down. I did that once, and then I've also done one of the guided one. Anyone was much, much better than I. Because it is, it's, I mean, it's very low there, and it can be kind of dangerous getting in there. So, I mean, and this may be an, an item, just, I don't know, Elise, if you can look into it, but just have some sort of sign there at the, because it's basically just a ditch where people start putting in, in Valley Ford.
Is it, is it possible for one of you to go and just get, put a pin in a Google map so that we know where that spot is, and I can ask TPW to get a sign?
So part of the problem also is where they're putting in is in great debate, i- i- it appears to be Marin County. Yet, when they come on in, the sheriff that's going to respond is Sonoma County. This was a, a big deal, actually, and Sheriff Jason ended up calling, because they ended up over on the Marin County side, once, once they were told they were on private property. Then they went and trespassed on the Marin County side. Sheriff Jason called the Marin Sheriff, who told them they weren't going to take the time to go out. That property owner then called the Marin Sheriff, and then the commander, our sheriff's department called Marin Sheriff. And by, then the sheriff went out. So this is a very, and that is him as a mom. And I, my kids are grown and long gone, but you know, that terrifies me as a mom, what if there is a true tragedy or an event, an emergency down there, there's going to be all this squabbling. A sheriff, Jason said, hey, I'll go, no problem, if there's something bad goes wrong, I'm, I'll just go deal with it and deal with the ramifications of being, you know, setting foot on Marin County turf. But what if we had an organized way of doing this, and every, you know, Jason knew they were coming, the Marin Sheriff knew they were coming? How do we do this?
Yeah, and the other piece too is that they have they do have a ranger, and rangers have enforcement capability. I wonder if, as that, as that park becomes more official, if we can, if we can rely upon the the ranger of the, of the entity rather than either Marin or Sonoma. I actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with Supervisor Redoni and Wanda Cutter of our Mass Bendisino counterpart. We're meeting on the concept of having a tri-county coastal pledge and collaboration over issues such as these. Actually, a good time to bring up the question of the estero.
Is the estero, the parks?
It's in peace. It's trapped, there's pieces, a different public entities.
It's also the southern border of the county, so that makes it
Correct.
It's intriguing.
And again, I think everyone that was involved, everyone I heard from, the first words out of their mouth was, we're not, you know, we think this is great, that kids are getting into nature and investigating. But these, this is what's happening, this group was from Livermore. They, they, and that, there, there were some other things there too, but they really had no clue what they were getting into, and they did it, the adults even. So
Who lined that up again?
Who did it? Who, who organized that trip? Livermore Boy, uh, Boy Scouts troop nine thirty-six? Or did it?
They just did it for the heck of it.
They found, they saw that there were, with the land trust. They, they know that the water is public, they know that the beach to a point is public. And they felt that they had the right to be there, and, and that's true to an extent, but the right to be there. But thirty people, twenty of them minors. You know, that, without any resources, without any previous knowledge of the environment, you know? Different story.
Especially with respect to the sandbar, because that sandbar is very, very environmentally sensitive. And I guess a lot of that is, sorry, I guess a lot of that is going to have to do with the, the land trust and, and whenever they step up that.
But the land trust can only do so much, because the land trust is only, you know, a portion of the Sonoma County part, and it was actually the people that first made contact with them was a couple that lives on that property is a caretaker. And they went, they made contact, and it, it, unfortunately, the adults, the boy scout made it ugly, and that's when the sheriffs became involved. So I'm positive that when Wildlands becomes a up and running, they've got their their trails, they've got their gate. I'm sure they will run everything quite well. But it's this bizarreness of, or not bizarreness, but complications of, they can only do so much and only on their property, right? They can't, they have no authority off their property. And even if you bring in Sonoma Land Trust, which is next to Wildlands, they only, I think, a join by land in a very small area and I don't think that's accessible. But even if you say have a group that kayaks in onto Sonoma Land Trust, then that's Sonoma Land Trust dealing with it. And then there's private property, then there's the wildland. So see, it's like
So there's like five moving parts. And then, I mean, the Valley Ford part is also, I mean, because putting in there in Valley Ford is, I mean, is that public property? I think that's private property.
It's private property. The elderly man, I believe, owns it at this point. He's repeatedly tried to block access and gets no good for it. And he, you know, he had some trees, very large trees that he'd had taken down for other reasons. And he stacked them and people came in in the middle of the night with chainsaws and took them out.
Apple's chutzpah never fails to amaze me.
Well, I mean, it may be worthwhile, Beth, if we want to just, I mean, it feels like there is, there's, because there's so many moving parts, there may be something worthwhile in. You know, we should try talking to the to the landowner of that land where people are putting in in Valley Ford. And then and then seeing and then, you know, the issue of the folks at the other end is, you know, that's, those are more, those are bigger interests. So I don't know, you know, what the answer is for that side of it, but.
So I like the collaborative idea of doing something that in conjunction with Marin County, with the land trusts, with the conservation easements, where people, at at the very least, have to register so people know they're there. It was also deer hunting. There were, I knew of, probably fifteen hunters out that weekend in that area on their own property, right? So that, and that also, as a mom, you know, worried me. You know, if you don't know a group of Boy Scouts to someplace, you don't know they're there and they shouldn't be there. That's just tragedy waiting to happen. Anyway, it's it's a complicated problem. I was encouraged to not have one person say to me, they shouldn't be there in the first place. I was encouraged by that. Just, we needed to know they were there. There should be a process.
Right. And it's tough to get the word out to just miscellaneous groups that are not in contact or, you know, probably some some leader is an outdoors guy who's spent his time out there and didn't see any reason with, with any reason not to just share this with his his troop. That's just problematic all around because, you know, signage has to be a part of this because that's the only way to get it is by by people who are out there seeing it.
Do you think that the estero as a topic could rise to the MAC agenda and sort of bring these forward and maybe even involve some of the entities?
Great.
That's a good point. Thank you.
And actually, there are, I mean, it does have a lot of moving parts, so it would be a nice way to, you know, especially with it being the southern border of the county, it makes it more complicated.
Get everybody in the room together. At least you're meeting tomorrow. Maybe you'll know a good time to pull that trigger.
I'll ask. I'll ask and report back.
All right. It sounds like we're at a sort of a natural stopping point. I don't know if, is there anything else?
Just Brian, that you're doing fabulously. I really appreciate you taking this role and we're in good hands.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate it as well. Thank you, Brian.
All right, so officially we'll need a call for agenda items, but we sort of I will say the next, our next scheduled date would be December twenty-eighth, which would be right between Christmas and New Year's. Probably not a great time for a meeting. I don't know if we want to just sort of say that we're not going to do that at that point or if there's something that maybe we want to discuss that we know of before then we would move it up because obviously December twenty-eighth would not be a great day, great.
Or or back because the week before is the Lower River MAC, which really makes Mary and Elise are both really busy. If we moved it back a week, it would be after the New Year.
Well, we always have the joint MAC meeting in January in order to train the new people that come on. So that whole period is quite busy. So unless we have something that rises to the level of having a meeting, I would, I would go for saying, let's, let's skip the December meeting, do the date and have the next one be in February.
Let's just say that right now. And then we can have a special meeting if something comes up.
I think that's a great idea.
I agree.
All right.
Unless, of course, you guys want informal martini time and that works too.
I'm on it.
All right. So with that being said, I think that is, that is everything we have on the agenda. So I don't know if we want to do a motion to adjourn.
A motion such.
I second.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, great.
All right, thank you so much.